Parents in school on the formula used to calculate the GPA. This language means that to achieve the maximum GPA of four point nine five zero, students must have a four point oh or straight A's in their courses, and then students earn bonus points for honors, AP, IB, and dual enrollment courses. This is not new. This is the formula that was used for GPA calculation until the cohort of two thousand and twenty one, and it's also the formula for how GPA calculation is currently being calculated on student transcripts, or adding it to the regulation for clarity. And finally, on page nine, section three, titled "High School Graduation: Special Education", we work with our Student Services Division to include preferential language of specially-designed instruction in lieu of special education service. Madam President, members of the Board Superintendent Jarrett, this concludes the proposed amendments to Regulation fifty-one twenty-seven. We thank you for your time and consideration. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Colleagues, I see a couple members in queue. Let's see if I can get this all written down. Trustee Johnson? Miss Trustee Johnson, you are in the queue. You are at it. Go for it.
This is trade board. Thank you, Madam President. What, uh, can you, and maybe you stated, I may have missed it. I saw, apologize if I missed it. What's the difference between past and fulfilled when in that quest work?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board Superintendent Jarrett. The past implies that there was a minimum score needed and that you had to attain a certain minimum score. Fulfilled means that I simply sat for the exam, and regardless of my score, I have fulfilled the requirement.
Understood. Uh, okay, and then, uh, the next, when a student can exempted, exempted from a physical education course, may take, uh, more advanced courses that would then help them towards either earning additional public credit or earn them a more distinguished diploma?
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board Superintendent Jarrett. Yes, Trustee Johnson, that is correct. Students have to first request that they want to be exempt. They would let their counselor know, I'm playing a sport and I want to be exempt. A counselor would say, that's great, you're gonna have to take another class instead. What would you like that to be? Counselor would give them their options, and truly, some student athletes may say, oh, I, I didn't realize the only course left was this, and so I, I want to take PE, so you don't have to be exempt from it if you don't want to be. It really is a choice between student, parent, and counselor.
Got it.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Colleagues, a bit of time. Uh, we don't have a couple of comments on item four point oh one. However, I am receiving motion. Trustee was one.
Thank you, President Garcia, from the world. I, um, move to, uh, have the notice of intent for the Clark County School District Regulation fifty-one twenty-five.
Thank you, Trustee was one. Trustee Williams? Thank you, Trustee Williams. Colleagues, we have a motion. But trustee was one in a second. But Trustee Williams, please cast your vote. Make that motion, pass of five to two. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, we are gonna move on to item five point one oh one, five point oh one. This is a public comment. Item is not listed on action, as action items on the agenda. Before we, um, delete, uh, close this section, before we end this session, I'd like to invite anybody who has not heard of public comment cards, um, to place them at those at this time. At the bottom of the pile. In queue, we'll begin with any results who spun up in advance. We have, excuse me, uh, Armand Bennett, followed by Christie Foreman. Armand's presence. Christie Foreman. It will go straight into the yellow card. Thanks very much. Um, Dr. Tiffany Fomo. Dr. Vemo.
Thank you, Dr. Christie, you have the record. And specifically about autonomy and individual rights, and the stance of identity block. And tonight, I'd like to talk about additional which you decided is fun. It's not a very good, teacher part of the thing. There is something that we can't stand again, and you took all grades by a time in the community by a pattern. The time varies based on respect. Elementary teachers' final grades are due anywhere from week one through the end of the semester to the Friday of September ten. Middle and high school teachers' final grade review, starting at noon on Friday and going both now. My last file ended at eleven twenty. I got my first email from Biden, which, though, right in me, my final grade was not posted at noon. The expectation being that my exam were graded, rated, reported within that forty-minute window. And the fast grader, much of it unknown. There are two types of exams to grade, which include essays and multiple choice exam, math, problem functions, science equations, et cetera. For forty-plus students in that last period. Add to that the instability of these specific standards and the internet might be horrible. Stress and anxiety, we're not ready for one or rating high. Our practice for grade will also be on a Friday, opening on the school day. How are we supposed to teach well-to-balance with the doubt? If we are stressed out about grading and misspent of labor, can put these grades as body programs of internet connections and post these grades by times which are based on your site. Again, autonomy raises ugly head because some people say our grades are due by noon, while others report their grades are due by twelve p.m. We need some grace or some consistency for these posting times. I would also like to ask that you please consider fixing a CCSD calendar to make the first day of second semester a teacher working. We have three days to prepare for students after summer break. This ensures schedules are correct, classrooms are set up, campuses loaded, and we are ready to go so we can teach on day one. As it is now, we are scrambling to prepare what we need to do with students present on day one of seventh semester. Our canvas shelves do not have our student population. Council did not have time to get second semester schedules loaded. Lost valuable seat time and instructional time, which was a fix to making the first day of second semester a teacher working. But we can ensure everything is ready for our students. Getting back to seat term, on baby block, only three months, ten days in January, it's eight hundred fifty minutes. We follow the teachers on traditional schedules, see our students for eleven hundred minutes. That's two hundred fifty minutes. Absentees on baby block is a huge issue. We need to get rid of baby block. This should not be a site-based decision. This operational decision needs to be made and needs to go away. I had one freshman who told me she almost fifteen classes for future semester. Given that I only see her forty-three days this semester, including by half day her semester in zero, that means if she doesn't take twenty-six days, I will see her twenty-eight days this semester. Twenty-eight days and eighteen weeks of school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Vemo. It's right now, followed by Camilla Bywater.
He has a waiting, very public. That's what, uh, teachers roll in our schools for shutdown. We didn't give up any CSDs in addition to the higher not even harder. We pushed through learning gaps. We need to believe in the community, our students, our family, and our community. Your veteran staff, we need to measure their esteem and our loyalty. And this is why we constantly made to us to go ahead. Ensure these persons that have been about clear, but you are current. Allow us to be, you know, return. From Friday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. Imagine what will happen. You can't be, if our veteran educators need in that, so more else, then come back. Now you're certainly catching the contact. How could you talk of these stops in your experience educating, just to leave? Create a simple process, educators to lead, maybe. Maybe not. Do you make it? They're trying to drop. They think it's the last research. Have a vision project. Be up. Put a record in the way we're helping. The industry is testing each other in distribution, apparently. Now it's happening. Beyond the district, we have lots of stuff. Begging you to ask your ministry to, we do start editing people both ways. It's just too much, some. And especially to these CCSD, they're from this book, this book. Take more time to do work at school. Preserve our footprint. And show us respect for showing us you value our time. So, a, we, we.
Bye. Doug Self and David Cohen.
If I'm looking at that, that's the first, the first I felt. I'm thinking of Bywater, President of Black Educator, Chair of Education for the National Action Network, and you go to Chair of Asia, Vice President, and. Um. Yeah, everything that Miss Spirel said is absolutely true and happening. Um, as an advocate in this community, I heard about this, a teacher recently, was in the district twenty-seven years ago, tried it from that, looked at her files, everything that she had no idea about. So there is definite problems with some administrators and the abuse of power. Um, I heard something tonight that really put an alarm in my ear, which is part of the reason why we have abuse of power. I heard that we need to protect teacher positions instead of giving teachers the freedom to decide how they want to choose to further their careers. We have to be careful about they protect teacher positions. We know that there are vacancies, but teachers should have the freedom to decide what they want to do. And frankly, you have to be a teacher in order to become an administrator. And we have to be careful that they can be, uh, what that does is it opens the work in it. For people to decide what someone's choice should be, um, in regards to, you know. The goal should be to prepare teachers to know that, fix their pay scale, definitely know that, so that our veteran teachers can be wholly supported and get what they deserve. Um, it is also important that special education teachers have more opportunity to be teachers. Special education teachers, I'm a licensed special education teacher. I'm working on my PhD. I'm almost finished with special education. Often, there is a discrepancy in the administrators on having that knowledge in special education. So part of this pathway should definitely include special education teachers in administrative role because they have that degree and that knowledge and that ability to support that population of students. Um. So the vaccine has always been on the forefront of ensuring that our minority class population, black, Hispanic, Pacific Islander, Asian, and these poor, underrepresented individuals have leadership conditions, are Native Americans. We are missing the mark there. We have to do better. We did ask for a pathway for lack of ownership, denied, but there was an urban leadership pathway somewhere. I would like to get updates on who came through that and how, um, was the population of underrepresented, um, teachers in.
It's human, Bywater. Doug Self. Followed by David, go listen.
Hi, my name is Doug Self. I'm a master chief assistant. I have the pleasure of also teaching a lot of things. Uh, spreading out the weekend. And I just, first of all, I gotta tell you all, uh, probably most of you. Um, I'm here also to talk about the state. I unfortunately was not getting my masters. So. I am now, I will be missing out compared to a new teacher on eighteen thousand seven. Um, I have about sixteen years left each. Eighteen, oh, sixteen years, that is two hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred six. Ten dollars compared to a teacher, new hire. Also, um, when you get a master that equates to about a column jump or a column change. Now, a master is three columns. If you're a non-tier-one school, that is three years each, that's nine years that a veteran teacher has to wait before they can get paid for another master. That also equates to another eighteen thousand dollars seven. Seven. As a couple of teachers have mentioned, if we leave the district, three years and come back, we are treated just like new teachers. You're given the same benefits. Um. That is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars each. That is half a million dollars. Just the remainder of my school. I'm teaching. So. I have started applying charter schools in the West Bay. Uh, I might even, if I haven't, uh, had much of this, by the way, there's a lot of math teachers out. So my plan is, unless I hear anything else later on this year, I will use CCSD in school, leaving the job I absolutely love in charter school. Teach for community in charter school. Come back, cross my fingers, hope that my job still live. Charter school. And then come back as a new teacher and be old. And then, I mean, basically, pray for another. It'd be all my father's. One of the way that or former, that be to the centralized moving home, moving house. Absolutely. Passes in English, doctoral and law, all by the title, seven children in twenty-three years. A part-time student, advocate. A child. And you know, I remember, this is a nice building, that was the first time anybody did it. But, you know. I want to talk about how the, I'm on SOT team. Some of the schools have been blocking some of the centralized approved vendors from going into the school. And they're gonna tell these vendors, you cannot come here. I'm talking about the four oh three B, the teachers. And some of these vendors are like, why can't I come in here? Well, John Levine or whoever is existing, but, but. Is doing that and sending out nibbles to the schools. It says something like this. American fidelity, horsemen, BMS, are the only approved vendors to enter to the school. If anyone tries to enter the school, not the end of the year, not sharing a CCPA, human staffing company, whatever, that, you do not let them in, and you call seven oh two, seven three three, thirty, sixty three. What the heck? When I fought with David Gardner, Stephen Silver calls, and everybody else for SOTs and Bon Tony, that these schools have some companies to make some decisions. Or their staff, what's in the vestiges of their portfolio? Not what's in the vestiges of their pocket of whether they're being paid somewhere else and saying, the only that I see will be five hundred PMS. Oh, that is the part. This is a real question, guys, that are looking. You gotta ask them, why are they doing this? I mean, why they're blocking others, why they're blocking schools from allowing certain vendors that are approved by the district to be sent here? They won't let it. You know, I can go back to legislation, you won't find it here. I'm the people why they tell them murder law and what. I, I've done this here, should tell you. I'm the one that took all the kids. I'm the one that got in front of those people that were stealing. And I'm the one that said, you know what, you're not gonna steal from anyone else. Now I'm gonna do, now keep doing. But you know what, I don't feel like I understand. Dr. So, let anybody know that, I'm gonna keep stating, no matter what. But until you guys figure it out, I'm gonna help you figure it out.
Rachel Turner. Followed by Kimmy Lindsay. Nancy.
What's going on, but that salary, that's crazy, that's. I don't know, because nap, I love nap, and I love it, but, um, coming from a person to my. Um, I know that when you have, um, a disparity between employers and retention of senior personnel, you cannot, uh, so much more. Uh, this is about how people pull forward to recruit higher trained and onboard people than it does to retain the quality that you have. Stadium of options right now. But whatever you're doing, it does something. It doesn't make sense from just playing in the mind series and retention. That is completely off our, you. I just wanna say, um, if something went wrong and how that was created, no, I don't get it. Um, because you will just.
Kimmy, follow by Mr. Underwood.
For the school, only the students for this time, there is that we need to. Fifteen, twenty students were involved in a time. At, at some conversation about this, I had audio videos to people. Even in. What, and it's a great topic. That's. Fine, yes. There is, it's not our fault, we need to. Be the work. Organization, that's true. You don't have to be the one to work. From the base community, they're on the tempo, that's the community. Let me be working with their. Let me take him on people's. He's there. In three hours, y'all could stay. Whoever should make this. Forward and backward. Go on, this college, this other man's.
With the underwood.
Of course, they're not in the store, they're placing store bags and that. This district, the families that are hired to serve. And the vendors, their right to assemble and trust their humans with. The school board removes their bases when the electorate has its time to speak. They place the public's comment on an arbitrary syndrome, which is a duty. Lack of a consistent start on events or free speech. Those six pack in America who works hard all day of likewise his life have no idea who the trustees' background will be done. Be an hour after meeting begins or three and a half hours. Notes. The school board must realize they cannot govern without the consent of the government. And that seventy percent of the electorate are opposed to intoxicating donations and the class of the distorted justice that Chris had. Readies from an hour. Bon's from their year represents the seventy percent majority, not just Republicans, but half of the Democrat voters as well. Where not like you radicalized progressive gender movements and race segregationists. Democrats do not want CCSD to keep their child insulting gender, convention, secret from them from the beef. Or have been segregated by the color of their skins, we have learned, the currents in last day experienced stools. They're just so far behind their seed plot, they call it the Great Wall of China. So, they cannot see there that they are facilities for abuse, minor. In the state of Florida, they gave the rape of the child under the age of twelve, punishable by death. Transient child is much more invasive than permanent than a single act of rape. Horrible and violent is what it is. Genital mutilation by hormones or surgery is permanent. It is a kin, it's a perpetual rape.
Then. I have people all the time, I have Mr. Underwood, I wanna give you your entire time. Um, uh, we are, you're providing able to comment on items that you sold us your jurisdiction over. Not sure where your, please help me understand where your item is going.
You'll find out as soon as I'm done.
Very good. Thank you for taking this time.
So.
Please pause. Go ahead, Mr. Underwood, and then we'll go ahead and get started. You got this. No, please go ahead and get started, and we'll, uh, pause the timer until.
We try and prevent this, uh, last element, uh, considering the legal age of their child's homosexual technical organs in a lifelong and common damage and suffering as were for their child was raped. He transitioned, tell us about painful inhumanity we now living because of the lies of GBI's gender ideology. The school parents of Clark County are learning the district's fate and event of genital destruction with the man that the perpetrators meet a powerful and just legal punishment.
Hey colleagues, at this time, we're gonna move on to item six point oh one. That's the upcoming meeting of the Board of Trustees that is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-fifth, at five PM here at the Week's Career Academy. Uh, as a reminder, colleagues, we are present here on this school because our boardroom is currently under construction. We're very grateful. To make accommodations to, uh, ensure our new members have seats on the dial. Now we're moving on to item seven. Now we're moving on to item seven. Sherman, Trustee William. I'm making a motion again. Thank you, Trustee William. Trustee, move around to Adam. Thank you, Trustee, move around to Adam. Colleagues, we have a motion by Trustee William. The thing about Trustee goes from the Adam, please cast your vote. Thank you, colleagues. The vote has passed five to zero. The time is seven twenty-seven. Have a wonderful evening.